Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting for Thursday, April 20, 2023. This is not a public hearing, but it is being shown live on Zoom as indicated on the agenda. We'll call the meeting to order with a roll call. Mike Deputis. Sherri Corrigan.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Jane Gleason.
Here.
And Carl Schultz.
Here.
And Chair Michael King is here. So we have a full board. We're here tonight to continue our discussions and possible vote on the thirty-three dash twenty-one Wareham PB One LLC, zero root twenty-five solar energy generation facility. Decision is due by May twenty-sixth. Where do you want to start? I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Sherri. Sherri, would you, would you be kind enough to recant some of the content from our meeting with Rich?
Yes, and I'm gonna be a little bit careful because these are attorney-client communications and we have to find a way to communicate what you all need to know without, you know, revealing too much of
Right, yeah.
Advice we're getting. We'll start with the easy one, which is Jane on the question of whether you can vote on this or not. His answer was no.
Okay.
He looked at a statute that governs this situation and it is an absolute one missed meeting limitation.
Yep.
I think the question came up whether, whether it could be waived or not by the applicant. Ken, I don't know if we ever
Ken left. Oh, no, there was
There was a case that allows that to happen.
That allows waiver?
Yeah.
It's, it wasn't disclosed during our
No, it wasn't.
No, so, and I, I think by the direction of, of counsel, if he didn't feel that it was worthy of noting in our meeting, it's probably something we should just stick to his decision and, and just play it on the safe side and not have Jane vote.
Yep.
I'd hate to have her vote and then find out after the fact that she shouldn't have.
So, I
You have to go to the restroom or?
No, on this topic, can Jane, or not Jane, sorry, can I ask a question or do you want to go through the whole?
Go ahead.
So, in, in conclusion then, my understanding, that means that Mike can vote, Sam can vote, you can vote, and I can vote.
Correct.
And because this requires a super majority, we have to have four positive votes?
That's right.
That's correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We had some conversation about, you know, whether this could be considered site plan review, you know, or special permit. And I think Rich's view was that he, he is comfortable with his previous advice that, that because the planning board's practice has been to consider these proceedings with respect to solar site plan review, special permit, that, you know, that, that can continue.
Right, the precedent has been set that we stick to it.
Right.
Yeah. Then we had a conversation about various arguments that the, the applicants have raised, talked those over, and I think got an assessment of risk from him on different alternatives. And, you know, and I think, you know, he made some suggestions about what might be less risky. It's hard to talk about that without disclosing attorney-client advice.
Yeah, without going into detail.
And I think that's that's, that's what I have in terms of
Yeah, it was, it was a very short agenda as far as items on the discussion. A lot of it was just discussing whether or not Jane was gonna be able to vote. You took up a lot of time.
Sorry.
But we wanted to make sure we got it right.
Yeah, absolutely.
So there was, there was lengthy discussion about that.
We also had a conversation about the new leaf projects, but because we're not talking about that tonight, probably not, not relevant.
Yep. So I guess, you know, the, the questions are still on the table for the members, which is battery safety, whether or not we're, we've heard everything that we need to hear, whether we need to bring in an expert.
I, I'm, I'm ready.
Really?
I can't believe we don't have control.
I, I, I don't either.
It's controlled by, you're gonna go down to Matt and see if he's there, what, see what he can do to control it.
Yeah, we're gonna watch her make dinner.
I'm sure it's not a cooking show.
Is that Nancy?
It's Nancy, yeah.
Nancy?
Nancy.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yeah, you, 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 can you mute yourself and maybe turn off your video?
I can try to do that, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Didn't mean to be interruptive.
Well, we were wondering what you were making for dinner. You know, I guess it's just an open discussion on, on what we've heard. Do we need to hear more? Whether, if any of the board members have concerns over the lack of information or if there's been sufficient information. There's been, there's, there's been a suggestion put forth that we consider some input from a, what is being called a, a battery solar, battery storage expert. And if
Public hearing's closed, right?
Right, we would have to vote to reopen the public hearing. And, and I'm not sure, I'm not a hundred percent sure personally. I'm, the, the expert, their, their company, their company name and website was shared. I went on it and looked at it. And it's more of a reactionary after the problem starts kind of response team as opposed to a preventative mitigation type of company.
Did we all get that information? Because I don't remember seeing that.
I don't know who, who we sent it to.
Who he, who is he? Okay.
Mr. Ken.
Did any of you, I don't remember seeing that.
I can, I can see if I can dig up the, the email and I'll, I'll forward it. I, like I said, I personally don't see any more usable information that would come from it.
I agree. Well, I, I think a lot of the, the experts that are out there are gonna be pretty biased because they're on the other team right now, the way it is. Battery storage hasn't been around long enough to have anybody with a negative side opinion or, you know, it's negative input.
And we won't be able to refer to this document in our findings.
Correct.
Anyway.
Right, not unless we reopen the public hearing and allow them to, to speak.
And what, what you're raising, Mike, reminds me that, that we did talk with Rich about the possibility of conditioning and approval on the provision of additional information on safety issues. Is there, I, I at least have many, many issues that have not been answered yet because I think when the safety issues came up, the applicant took the position that they wanted the public hearing closed and didn't really respond to the concerns that were voiced. So there are lots of things that we don't know, like, you know, type of battery, how it would be installed, how it used, where located, what all the safety features would be, et cetera. And so there, it would be possible, I think, to condition and approval on provision of all that information and approval of that. But it's not opening the public hearing, but it's seeking additional information, which they have not proffered.
Right, and, and
So we can do that without opening, reopening the public hearing?
We can try, yes.
What are, what are the implications and what is the procedure for reopening the public hearing?
How's that possible?
It, it's not straightforward, I don't think.
No, that's not what Rich Bowen said.
Oh, it is? Pretty easy, yeah.
Well, he said that his, his, his call was that we get agreement with the applicant and reopen the hearing, just take the vote and reopen the hearing.
Did you, I noticed he did not respond to the inquiry of whether or not it restarts the sixty-five day clock.
Right, well, that's why we need the agreement from the, the applicant.
From the applicant?
Yeah.
And keeping in mind, the applicant was the one that petitioned us to close the hearing and move on.
Yeah.
So we might, might not prevail.
I forwarded you guys that email. Yeah, so like, like I said before, I just wanna make sure that we're all in agreement that we have heard enough, haven't heard enough, have done our due diligence to the best of our ability. Turn off my turn off my notifications.
Okay, so, yes.
Okay, so, are you open for discussion?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
So I have three, uh, three opening questions, and this is just fact-finding. Through you to Mr. Buckland, when he's focused, not
I'm listening.
Okay. What is the plan of record that we're gonna vote on? What is the date of the drawings? So I wanna make sure when I go back and look at the drawings, and are they online? Can I find them online?
Yes, they're online.
Okay, so what, what is the date we're gonna use?
January twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
January twentieth, twenty twenty-three. And that shows the fifty-foot vegetative buffer all the way around, the fencing, the revised number of panels. That's the plan I'll look at.
That's correct.
My next question, same, same line of thinking, the operations plan the operations plan has not been updated since the application, right? So we should be using the operations plan back from the original application?
It hasn't been changed yet, that's
Well, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find, I don't think it's been changed. Do we, does anybody know?
So I'm checking now, see if it's
Uh, cuz I, these should, whatever our findings are, these, these should be the facts that we're
The latest I see, there's a revision, revised operations and maintenance plan dated eleven twenty twenty-two.
Eleven twenty twenty-two.
I, I wanted to offer something to you as well, too, by just talking about this, because you're, you're talking about making the findings of the, on the permit. That's something you can ask the attorney to do for the applicant, is to write the findings because it's up to, it behooves them to have something that clearly states what their intent is in the application. And then what you do is you spend your time on the conditions of the approval.
Right.
And what you wanna have and, or modify that as, as needed. That's another option. And, and you can, you can, however, go through and, and create the findings yourself, too.
Well, whether, whether I create the findings or we, I, I wanna make sure that when I'm thinking about conditions, I'm looking at the right
Documents.
Documents.
Right, yes.
Because one of the things, before I give up the floor or before I'm beaten into the ground is I wanna talk about a, a possible condition on the operations plan, and I just wanna make sure, two conditions on the operations plan. Okay. And then what was the date of the last decommissioning plan? And then I have a comment on that, because I don't think they've ever, I think it's twelve twenty twenty-two, twelve-something twenty twenty-two.
Was it eleven twenty?
That was the operations plan. So part of the submission
I can provide, I can provide There's, there's, please, there's no public input, yeah.
That's John
I, I know who it is, but if we're not gonna let the public talk, and I have the document, it's six, it's two six twenty-three.
Okay. So we're gonna use two six twenty-three as the decommissioning plan as, and this we may not know often. We have two or three letters from the applicant that made some additional concessions that we should attach to our understanding of the decommissioning plan. And, and perhaps, as Ken said, the applicant can provide us their input to what the fi, what, what did you call it? The
Findings?
The findings are, but for me, I'm gonna make my decision based on the plan of record dated twenty, or one twenty twenty-three, the operations plan dated eleven twenty twenty-two, and the decommissioning plan, two six twenty-three, and then a couple of letters from the attorney. Okay, so for discussion with the board and particularly Ms. Gleason, I would like to recommend that we condition the operations plan on the solar seed pollinator plan that I submitted at the last meeting. Now, Ms. Gleason had some comments on that.
Yeah.
Uh, and then I also wanted to condition the operations plan, they, they basically, in the operations plan, they both, they had a, they said that they would seed, the, so that's not a new, I'm just gonna be more clear, clear on what I think we need to do. And they also said they were gonna recycle the panels. So I wanted to be more clear to say they, they should recycle the panels using the, the best available environmentally safe guga, whatever the words are, available to, and the technology
Services.
At the time. So those are two conditions I would like to have all of us consider. But then, yeah.
So the, the concern that I had about that seed mix was the percentage of it that is relegated to sheep fescue. And it, it becomes a bit of a monoculture. I love that there, in there, there are pollinator plants, butterfly milkweed, partridge pea, sun drops, and Ohio spiderwort, which is great because it's, it's great for the pollinators, which is helpful. But I worry about the ninety-four point nine percent being a, a single species of grass. There was a, a pollinator mix that was actually for another project. It's for Ferring Hill. But it was put together by Ernst Conservation Seeds.
That's the one I used. That's exactly what I used, is the base.
But it's limited to that sheep fescue, and this has a couple of different grasses, and it's split up thirty-five, thirty-five, ten percent of mix.
Then, then something fell off what I said, cuz I just copied that document and took anything that said Ferring Hill out.
Yeah, cuz there are only, there are only one, two, three, four, five species on this, and, and the grass species is at ninety-four point nine percent of the mix. Whereas this breaks it out into far more different species, and I thi, I think
What's the date of that one?
This, uh
It was my intent
June fourteen, twenty twenty-two.
I took a later one, from September. Ferring Hill had one from September of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I just, I worry about that monoculture. And it was, it was even hammered home to me, looking at, we, had, there was a presentation by the Historical Society of Main Street, and it had all those lovely elm trees. But it was a monoculture, and they got diseased, and we lost all of them.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, what I wanna do, so my, my recommendation to the, to the board, or the, yeah, we're a board, is that we, we have some specificity
Yeah.
Around that.
Agreed.
I, I used one that we had gotten from another project, and my intention was to leverage that cuz we spent money, I mean, everybody spent money to get that written.
Yeah.
It seemed pretty good.
I think that my, that was actually my comment on that, or was going to be. We stopped conversation on that project when things went to the courts. But I think that was my comment about this seed mix from Ferring Hill as, I, I remember there being some discussion, or in my mind, there was a question.
Okay.
And that would be my question to Ferring, the Ferring Hill proponents as well.
So what, if we're going to propose a protocol as a condition, we should, we should try and make it as best we can between now
Yeah, and I just, I just like the, the, I think it needs to be diversified a bit more than having virtually ninety-five percent of it be one species.
All right, so if you can help me write that condition
Okay, all right.
Presuming we get the writing conditions, but
Maybe what we can do is reach out to Ernst and see why they updated to this seed mix over this one or something.
Okay, well, we have to be careful.
Yeah, right, I, I absolutely have to be careful, but that would be my inclination, would be to reach out to them and say, what's the difference?
Or, or we could condition it with some, a seeding protocol substantially equivalent.
Right, that does, that, that bears in mind that it should not be an essential monoculture.
And that we can, similar to what Sherri had said earlier about the battery storage, that we all agree what the, what the protocol is.
Yeah.
But I like the fact that the protocol talked about establishing a seed base
Yeah.
Then coming back and reseeding
Absolutely, and I didn't see
And, um and Ken, I had suggested at our last workshop that we, we make sure that the applicant saw my idea. Even though it's not part of the public hearing, it's, we can, I can condition anything I want. Can we just make sure he gets a copy of that and?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I mean, they had agreed in the operations plan that they were going to establish ground cover. I'm only requesting that we condition it by going further with some more specificity.
This one is June fourteen, and that's
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there is a September version, you know, on Ferring Hill.
Well, I will say that this is a four-foot mix and that's a three-foot mix.
That was one of the things we changed. That was one of the things we changed on Ferring Hill.
Yeah, that we tried, we lowered it.
We lowered it.
Yeah, but I still think that there are other grasses that
All right, I, I'm not an expert enough.
Yeah, it's the monoculture thing that worries me. I don't know the, I don't, I don't, I'm not a horticulturist, but I just know that monocultures are a tough thing.
All right, so when we get to conditioning it, I'll, I would like to propose a condition like that, and perhaps we can there were, I, I left something in the opening sentence, I think, of that protocol that said there was the ability to change, but we had to all agree to it.
Yeah, okay.
But the, the goal is, what we want is to establish ground cover.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Sustainable and, and
Well, we're looking for success.
Success, yes.
And in establishing the plantings.
Yeah.
Um, that's key, and that's my only concern. It's not that I don't like the color of the flowers.
Okay, so to the board, I, I, I'm giving you my input that as, if we move forward and we take a vote and it's positive, I would like to add those conditions, and I've established the baseline of the documents I'm reviewing, plus all the other stuff we got from everybody in the world, but I meant, these are the, the plan of record.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, may I ask Ken a question or two? Has the applicant offered or agreed to reopen the public hearing?
They have allowed that you could receive additional testimony, yes.
Without opening the hearing? How's that possible?
I don't know if that's the case or not. If it requires us opening a hearing, I'm sure they would allow it.
So, but the, but the question still has remained unanswered if we open the, reopen the hearing to obtain
We have to have their agreement to that.
We'd have to have their agreement and does it restart the sixty-five day clock once we close it?
Right, so we have to ask them that question and allow them to respond.
Okay.
And so let's, let's assume that the board wanted to reopen the public hearing. Would it only be for the purpose of receiving information from the expert? Or would this be an opportunity for the board to have all of its questions on safety answered?
Rich Bowen suggested that it's an open public hearing that, when we reopen it.
So everything's
So everything's on the table.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess the question again to the board would be have, have the members of the board to this point, do you feel comfortable in the fact that you've heard everything that you need to hear concerning public safety, operations, battery safety, decommissioning, all the components of this? Are you satisfied with the, with the amount of information that you've been able to receive during the public hearing? Or do you feel like you need to hear more and, and propose that we reopen the hearing?
If, if I can add something to this, I had a conversation with a person who calls himself an expert in this. And I learned a, a variety of new, new things about batteries and response to fires at, at the batteries as well. I, I think it would be of interest to you if you, if you're, if you're at all uncomfortable with approving a battery.
Well, I get, again, I guess that, that goes back to the question I've asked the board. Do you feel comfortable with the amount of information that you've heard from this, the variety of sources? Or do you feel like you need to hear more information from a, a self-proclaimed expert? We don't know who this person is, so I'm not gonna call him an expert, cuz I have no idea who he is.
I, I have an opinion on this.
Yeah.
I think that, I don't think we've heard enough, I don't actually think we've he, heard much at all that supports the safety to the degree that I think would be, in my opinion, important for making a finding of health, safety, and welfare. That, that I think what we have heard is that it's a battery and batteries are part of, you know, the climate strategy, and they're being promoted with incentives, and the, the state is anxious to promote them. I don't think that tells a planning board like this what it needs to know about what the safety of a battery will be in the particular spot that it's proposed to be. We don't know, I mean, there are lots of, from what I can gather, there are lots of ingredients to safety, including location of the battery, distance from other objects, kind of enclosure it's in, the kind of configuration it's in, the manufacturer. Some have been more prone to, to accidents than others. There are just in, you know, the training of the firefighters. I mean, my, my sense is that the technology is still in evolution. And so it worries me to just think about approving a battery, not, not knowing any of the particulars that seem to bear on safety. And then, but I would follow that by saying, I don't know, I'm not voting on this, so this is me just throwing thoughts out. You know, I think given, given where we are in terms of the development of the technology, as I understand it, you know, I, I wish it was two years from now. I wish it was four years from now. And I wish we knew a lot more about the technology, the specific technology, and I wish we knew more about the other technologies that are under development that are likely to be available at a later point. So those, those are, you know, my thoughts on it. But I don't think we know, I, my view is I don't think we know enough.
So we haven't been able to mute this at all?
No.
Do you think, um, do you think by reopening the public hearing and gathering more information, that that's gonna put us any further ahead? As far as an understanding of the technology? Knowing that it's not gonna be built for two more years?
Keep the public hearing open for two years?
Oh, God, no.
I think, I think that's, that's my concern is.
Oh, go get, I think they'll get spoon-fed whatever information that was swayed more to their favor than anything else.
Well.
Cause the technology's not there yet, they don't know themselves. I think it's, uh, asking a lot of us to make a decision on an unknown like that, that has great circumstances. I mean, it's not gonna affect me, I probably won't be here, but it's gonna affect my kids and my grandkids. You know, once it happens, it happens, you know, the genie's out of the bottle, you're not gonna put them back in.
Yeah.
You know?
I just, I, I look at it as, I've learned so much, I've learned too much about batteries.
Well, I, I think they're, they're learning as much as we are as we go. Every time we ask a question, they come back with a different answer. Uh, are you gonna put power in there from other fields? Well, no, because it's not wired that way, but we could. Then the next two weeks later, well, we're gonna do it maybe twice a year, maybe. It's changing all the time, so their, their game is changing. And, and the thing is, like, like I said, it puts a burden on us trying to make a decision. And, uh, too many unknowns. Uh, you know, you know, we spend billions of dollars, beta testing and stuff to make sure it's safe. And here we go, we're doing something like this that is probably worse than anything that they're working on, medication or whatever. You know, if it gets into that water system, uh, you know, once it's in there, it's in there, that's it.
Well, on, on the subject of conditions. Um, is it, is it feasible? Or, you know, what's the, the temperature on the roof of the board? On a possible condition being that the battery storage is strictly for solar gathered electricity? That the, the, the battery does not take energy off the grid and only deposit its, deposits it to the grid.
Solar gathered onsite?
Onsite. On, right, as a direct result of the, of the array onsite.
When we started this whole discussion, that's what it was. That's what we were faced with, and over the years, it, it changes. And to your point, technology is always gonna change, what's they're gonna do in two years? Maybe something different than we're looking at today. And two years after that, the guys say, well, that was wrong, I mean, this is better. It's always gonna change, and whatever, the, everything changes. And this industry especially, it's booming, there's a lot of money from the state, a lot of money from the feds. And.
That's what's pushing it, sure.
That's, that's, it wouldn't be available. My concern, I'm, I'm, say a few short things. My main concern is the water. Talking to Nancy after the last meeting, she had a map of the aquifer. Uh, it becomes shocking. Most of Wayham is on the single source aquifer, except for Sliver at north and then northwest part of the town. They don't want us to use fertilizer on our lawn, that's how concerned they are. The polluted, it's, it already has issues from years past. Uh, my concern is if there is a, ever is a catastrophe, what will Boston do? Will they bring a pipeline down? Will they bring tankers of trucks full of water to fill the stand pipes? So we can drink water, cook and shower? Uh, answer's no. Uh, yeah, that's the scariest thing to me. It's the only source of water we have, it's the only source of water we can get. If something happens, town's dead, there's no water. And that's my main concern. And after seeing Nancy's map, I went back and looked at the EPA, uh, what their recommendations are, they're the same. They don't want us to do anything on top of the aquifer because it's so deadly to everybody around. Uh, they actually formed a committee, the Plymouth Converse Single Source Water Project. Uh, Terry Murray and our, our now Senator Mark Chico formed a committee. Uh, that basically they said, if you do anything stupid, you have no water. And that's the thing that scares me the most. Uh, Poland has a problem with power. So we did not send them solar panels, we spent, we will loan you three billion dollars to build nuclear plants. And so France needed upgraded power, so they built nuclear plants. And Germany needed more power, so they built solar and wind. Now Germany is buying power from France. Uh, but nobody's saying that. Nobody's mentioned a nuclear at all. Uh, we just signed a, a court agreement came down today in Maine. It overrode a petition that was on the ballot that passed by fifty-something percent to get some insane number of megawatts from Canada hydropower connecting to the New England grid. Uh, they weren't thinking about solar. Because it's not as efficient as almost anything else out there. Go way back to the beginning. The water, if anything happens, and we already have a potential problem with all the ones that are out there already. So we can't do anything about that, technology's changed, battery's changed, everything's changed since back then. My kids, my grandkids, if we mess up and something happens and the aquifer is polluted, they have to move, cause they can't live here, have no water. That's my main concerns, then my concern from the beginning. I agree with everything that's proposed, the ancient ways, the, the trees, the conservation areas, it's all pertinent information. It's all important, but if we screw up and we tank the aquifer, we're done, the town is done. My main concern from the beginning and still is, I don't think there's any way that we can protect it efficiently. We can't dig holes and, and take the whole array, like they do oil tanks and build a big concrete around it to hold everything. Uh, to hold millions of gallons of water it'll take to put it out, uh, that's not feasible. Uh, I don't know what the answer is, uh, but I am deathly afraid that something could happen and Wayham would not be Wayham any longer. That's public safety, that's public everything. Take the water, you've got nothing left.
Would a, would a possible condition be an array without battery? Because even though, even though the applicant has stated that they wish to put battery on the project, it's not a mandate.
Correct.
It's just a, it's a requirement by the state if you wanna participate in a particular program, as I understand it. So the array could go in place less of battery backups. I'm sure it doesn't fit into their, their financial plans as well without a battery as it does with, but.
True, but all the ones that are out there already are making money without batteries.
Well, most of them have, well, we're trying to get that, but the ones.
Right, we don't, I, I.
The ones over in Blue Wave have batteries.
Right. But most of them don't. And we don't know which ones do, we don't, we don't, we don't know definitively the percent, but many of them don't, and they're already out there.
Right, and they're producing electricity.
Exactly, I mean, would the batteries change my mind? Possibly, it's the, it's the most dangerous part of it.
Well, I think, I think listening to the board talk about the public safety aspect of our concerns, the battery seems to be the overwhelming.
Yeah.
Elephant in the room.
Yep.
And if the battery wasn't present, now, now we're talking about a solar array in a sand pit for the most part.
Right, and the last likely to have an issue with.
With contamination.
Yes.
Right.
My main concern from day one still is, and it, I, I'm not sure if we open the hearing, that that will change. Could, but I don't know. I don't know why we didn't send Poland, whole bunch of batteries and solar panels. Yeah.
Jane? You've been a little bit on the quiet side, other than grassy.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm listening, I, I, you know, I, there are some good questions being asked and I'm taking it all in, um.
Well, on one hand, the state says, we really want you to do this.
I understand.
Other hand, they say, if you do it and something happens, you're screwed.
You're screwed, you're, you're on your own, sorry.
We're sorry, we put this on you.
Yeah. Well, and, and even if we get rid of the battery, then we've got an, I, I would say that the battery is probably the, the top thing that concerns me. Um, with exactly what you've just talked about. And I think the next largest thing that concerns me and this is applicable to all of the solar arrays in town is how you handle the panels when they're obsolete and it's all, because we're getting slammed with it now, they're all gonna come obsolete about the same time.
Same time, not just Wayham.
There's no, there's no sort of.
Right, New England's gonna be inundated with twenty-year-old panels.
Exactly.
Time, every city in town.
And I, uh, and, and what's gonna happen, you know? There are a few things that could happen, but it's all speculation at this point, you know, it could develop a market for, for taking in these solar panels and, and recycling them. Or there's gonna be a secondhand market and they're gonna go to some other country and, and be a problem there instead of here. But you know what, it's still one planet. Um, so, uh, yeah. I think that's the next, the next issue after the, the battery issue.
What's the next issue?
Well, how about this, bro, thinking outside the box? What's the most expensive part? If you were to put a solar array on your house, what's the most expensive part? Is it the panels?
I don't know.
Is it the labor?
I think it's the panels.
The panels.
I think so.
Okay, so, is it, is it outside the realm of possibility that a condition could be placed that states that at the end of the life cycle of the panel? The reason they would be rotated out is cause they're not as efficient, not that they don't work.
Right.
But they're just not as efficient as they, as they want them to be.
Yeah, there's, whether it's, you think it's age or is it, is it, uh, technology?
Technology passes it by, but they, I know, I've had a couple of arrays myself over the years. And they stayed at year twenty, you can expect the, the panel to run at about eighty percent efficiency.
Is that an age thing?
I think so, I think the, the, the components or the, the, the rare earth metals that make up the panel just start to degrade over time.
So it's not just the, the, the technological developments
Well, I think.
are so much better than?
Yeah, I think it's a combination, honestly, I mean, if you've got, like, my, my, my first array on my first house, the panels were rated at two hundred and twenty-five watts. Now two to, two twenty-five is a joke, now, you know, they're in the four hundreds or better, I think.
But they're still functioning at a hundred percent of what they were when they were new?
Corr- correct, so.
So they're not really degrading.
Your laptop.
Why, why couldn't you, why couldn't you look at it as a possible condition, and I'm only spitballing them, that the panels don't get recycled, but the panels get donated to some sort of a, a organization that puts solar arrays on the rooftops of deserving residents of the town, or the deserving residents of the surrounding area. So now, now you're taking the, the possibility of those panels going into a landfill, whether it be in Wayham or, or in India, now you're taking that out of the equation. They have to set something up that would ensure that those panels ended up on the rooftops of somebody's home at no cost.
Well, and if it happens locally, then you're not adding carbon to the, 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 you're not embodying carbon in them with the transportation to get them to, say, India.
Right.
That's a fabulous idea.
Excuse me? Say that again for the record?
Fabulous idea.
That's what I thought I heard.
I think, I think we should explore that with them and see what their options, what their options are in the industry.
Several times over the years, as we've had these different solar companies come to us, I've, I've asked them all the same thing. How come there's, you know, you come to town and you want to clear cut the forest, you wanna put up these arrays? How come there's never anything for the citizens? You know, there's, there's, why can't you, why can't you take two cents a kilowatt hour or one cent a kilowatt hour that's produced and put it into a fund and make it available for the, for the, the, the senior citizens of the town that are trying to live on a fixed income and can't afford their electric bill? You know, tax money into the general funds is great, makes, makes the town run. The average person, person living on social security who can't pay their tax bill, they could kill us. They're not, cause they don't see any benefit, there's nothing tangible for them to see. We should start looking at these projects with an eye toward helping the average resident, not the town. The average person in town.
Public benefit, yeah.
Cause they're the ones that are giving it up, you know, you drive down Toby Road, you get to look at that eyesore.
Look at that, yeah.
And what do you get in return? Nothing.
You got some nice trees here that catches all the trash that comes from the mall.
So, I mean, is, is that, i- is that even a possibility? Or is it too hard to administer?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, how do you, do you?
Be very difficult to administer, and it would be very, it's a great idea, I'm not, you, now you open the question, what are the problems? They then have to go out and find citizens who are willing to do this, and what if they can't? What if they do a best effort and they really can't find enough citizens to do it?
What, to put solar on their roofs?
Yeah.
Well, I can't speak to fact because I've never gone out and polled the citizens of the town. But I, I gotta believe that if you went to a, somebody that was recently retired, you know, not everybody is lucky enough to put money away for retirement.
No, no, I understand that.
So if you went to them, if I, if I went to these two young ladies and said, you know, based on statistics, you're living on it, on a fixed income, how would you, how would you feel about putting solar on your roof, afraid?
But the panels are only one component of the cost.
Correct, that's part of the equation, I get it.
Then there's the operations cost, there's, all I'm saying is, if we condition it that way, how do we administer it? How do we ensure they did a best effort to try and find these citizens?
How do you, I don't know, do you?
And then how do we, what do we do if they say we can't find citizens?
Do you create a, do you create a second bond?
Instead of.
And, and, and put, you know, a certain amount of money in?
You just raised the question about administrative.
I'm not trying to defend it, I'm just, I'm trying to.
It's a great idea, any, anything for public benefit, I'm just, often we, we create good sounding projects that can't be implemented. So we just have to think about how would this be implemented and managed and administered.
So we've just sat here and, and pointed out that the state is pushing for, for solar projects, but they're, they're offering
Nothing.
Not.
Nothing to the homeowner.
In, in the way of backup. For, and, and a lot of fronts, and maybe this is something that the state should undertake is, is a program to keep them in the state. Uh, you know, maybe it's not limited to the town, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, it was just a thought.
No, it's, it, it's a great idea, please, I wouldn't have even said anything except you said, what are the, what are the things we have to think about?
I'm just, you know, I'm rolling this around in my head as we talk. And our overwhelming concern is the, oddly enough, is the environment. We're worried about the battery contaminating our groundwater, or we're worried about panels that may or may not get recycled properly and end up in a landfill and contaminating our groundwater. So if we looked at the possibility of no battery storage for the project, and we looked at the possibility of coming up with, and, and I would put it on the, the proponents' table. And say, this is what we're thinking, come up with a solution.
Well, then, that's, you have to open the public hearing because they have to submit a new plan. So, what, okay, so question, while we're discussing the same topic through you to Mister Buckland. If we were to condition it with no batteries, just, we, that fundamentally changes the design. They have to, oh, reopen the special permit.
Cause it's a major modification?
Right, that's my question, it seems to me that would be a major modification.
I know, it's, it's a condition you've put on the, on the plan, so, uh, they have to appeal it to, uh.
No, no, but let's say they accept, the, the, the condition would require them to redesign it. And let's say they, whatever the whole appeal, I'm just saying, taking the batteries out of the design, I'm forgetting all the legal process and appeals and, that changes the design, isn't that a major modification?
It's, it's a major modification, but it, it's not a process that you have to follow through on. It's just a, a condition you've placed on the, uh, on the project. It's like saying that you don't want to, to have ten parking spaces, you don't want to have five. That's a major modification, but that's not something that you have to go through a process, a separate process for. That's a major modification, but that's not something that you have to go through a process, a separate process for.
Wait, okay, so what?
Is it reducing?
Wait, I wanna go through my thought, because this is a technical engineering project, not removing parking spaces. If you're taking batteries out of an electrical configuration in the array, it would seem to me they have to redesign how the array works and how it connects.
I don't think so, I think that the battery storage is just a adjunct to the the system. I don't think, I don't think it's gonna affect the site plan that you're you're considering though.
Site plan review with special permit.
Right, I don't think it affects that at all.
Okay, that was my question, that's the opinion we've got.
I think, I, to Ken's point, I think it kinda would be like having three buildings on the lot plus a shed and then deciding not to put the shed on there, you haven't substantially changed the footprint.
I I don't agree that that an electrical engineering project is the same as changing the design of construction of multiple buildings on a lot. But I'm, I'm okay with Ken's advice that it's not a.
Not a major.
Well, it may be a major modification, but we don't have to.
But we don't have to have them reapply.
Can I throw up another point? What I see happening is as technology changes, the panels are gonna become more efficient.
Yep.
So what I see potentially happening is in ten years, proponents, someone who have come before the planning board at the time, says, we'd like to change the panels because they're gonna be a lot more efficient. And then you're gonna have those panels to be decommissioned and then the new ones in ten years when the project's at its end, you have another decommission.
Won't be at its end anymore.
You have another one.
Yeah.
Fortunately, I don't think I'm gonna be on the planning board in ten years.
Oh, I won't be here, believe it.
I'll be here.
Well.
That's me, bye.
There's, there's, there's another, there's another component to that argument or or that that thought process, so right now, we're we're contemplating all of the parts of this uh application in one of them, the decommissioning plan, which is based on X number of dollars per megawatt. Two years from now, which I'm gonna guess it's gonna be two years before they start construction, you know, with with no interconnect uh in hand. Right now, they're they're giving us a project that has panels that produce three hundred and ninety uh watts per panel and the whole project is, whatever it is, three point seven megawatts. Two years from now, now that that same panel and that same footprint produces five hundred watts and now the project is five megawatts. While the decommissioning plan's based on cost per megawatt, so now they're building a project that's larger than the decommissioning plan is accounted for.
Our, our, our condition allows for.
Every five.
Yeah, so we at least have an option, I mean, we could change that period, but that's what the bylaw says.
But I would, but I think one of the conditions, if 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 we were to approve, I think one of the conditions would be to recalculate the decommissioning plan on the date of um the building permit being issued.
Well, they're, they're very much in favor of that, they believe.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, they they asked for that.
Well, yeah, but they're asking for that with the understanding, with the idea as I, as as I took it all in, that they're gonna be able to renegotiate it down.
Right.
Um, that's not my idea. My idea is, if you get a building permit two years from now and your project has gone up twenty-five percent in capabilities because of s- of better panels,
I.
the plan should reflect that.
Right.
Yeah, it should reflect that, and it, I don't, I'm, I think I, I have a I think I agree with the idea of having the first reconsideration, the very first one on every project that we instead of every five years from the time of
Approval?
of approval, that there's one at the time of approval, that we have a document that is the decommissioning plan and an estimate. And then the next one, however many years it is, happens at the time of the, uh, uh, right around the construction time, because you never know when that's gonna be. And it could, you know, things could change, the technology, the efficiency, the whatever, so that that's the very first one, and then it's every five years.
Or or whatever, but I wanna build on that. We could also, from our recent learning, if we were to approve this particular project today, it's not gonna be built in two years.
Right.
So it's gonna have to go for an extension. So we could say, you gotta renegotiate the decommissioning plan if you wanna come for an extension. We could just write that in the condition so everybody knows.
Yep, so that if there's an extension, that that is another.
Thing, I'm just adding another trigger in the.
Right.
Okay, and just as this, I was gonna give you as a side note, that's completely irrelevant, the bylaw that's pen, the solar bylaw that's pending before the attorney general actually talks about, but it says at no point will we ever reduce the body. That's what's before the, the uh.
I was just gonna say something about we, that there should be something in there, that renegotiation and just to clarify, means it could go up or down, but, okay, so you're asking for it to not go down?
Ever go down, that's what the by, we don't know if it's gonna get approved.
My guess is that that regardless of what you put in that bylaw, it wouldn't happen anyway. Nothing goes down like that.
Right, yeah, costs don't go down.
I I was, it irrelevant, it it it's not relevant to this, to this matter in hand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I guess one thing I would say is, in uh the bylaw revisions that that Carl and I are working on, I think uh or in the rules and regulations, I think they would benefit from more detail on what happens at the time of a recalculation, and I would hesitate to call it a negotiation because I don't think it should properly be a negotiation, it should be the planning board saying, this is the amount that is necessary, and in this case, if you would like a building permit.
This is the amount, and and I do go back to that part of the zoning that states that that amount is what the planning board deems appropriate.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're going, Mr. Carl?
I, I.
Have you noticed we didn't put in?
You said you weren't gonna say anything to him.
I, I'm not gonna say, rather, I'm gonna support the board if you wanna open for more information on battery technology, I'll support it, I I don't know that I feel I need more. But my request would be, if we're gonna open the public hearing, then I wanna request that we get a legal expert in solar who who talks to us about what we can legally do under the state law today. Because I'm not confident that I'm getting um clear legal opinion from town attorney in writing that we can refer to. Because you and you and you and Sherry heard Mr. Bowen and that's not on the record, I can't refer to it, I can't do anything with it. I I I am going to request, if we're gonna open the public hearing, that we get legal advice from a a recognized, and by the way, if you read our bylaw, attorney review under a fifty-three G account is allowed.
Well, with no disrespect whatsoever, um Attorney Bowen is not a solar expert.
Right, I wasn't trying to be disrespectful, I'm just not getting written an opinion and.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not saying that you are, that was, for me, I'm not being disrespectful either, um that, that but he's not a solar expert.
And nothing we get from him is on the record. Well, limited, it was occasionally we get an email or something, but we don't get written legal opinion or legal advice on the record. And I'm, if we're gonna open a public hearing, I would request that we get written legal opinion on the record.
So that would, that would involve opening a, an account?
We already have the account, if it, I don't know if it got closed, but the account exists.
We have the open account, yeah.
So the, the applicant would have to fund the account.
That's right.
To support uh an attorney, these experts that are being proposed, whether it be a.
I'm not, I'm not requiring that to make a decision.
Yeah.
But if we're gonna open the public hearing and we wanna get expert, the the state law is changing so rapidly, I don't even know what we're allowed to do anymore.
That's, are we allowed to hire counsel other than town?
Yes, absolutely, in the bylaw, under a fifty-three G account, we can hire legal advice.
I I would just put out a caution there that we, to the extent we hire counsel, we find someone who is objective.
Right.
Just like the experts can be pretty well aligned, so can counsel, and if we want good advice, I think we need to find someone who is willing to to pitch it right over the middle.
And how do you arrive at that person?
You would look for them.
Well, the same thing with the engineer, we need to avoid Mike's concern that we're getting a biased engineer.
Well, why can't we ask counsel if he knows such a person?
How how are we, I I'm not getting into how we find the person.
Well, I just, I I think you're chasing the ra- the rabbit down the hole.
It has on YouTube.
Because if we ask our counsel for an opinion on who would be a good choice for counsel, the proponents, it it could take the position that, well, you know, the town picked the picked the attorney, he he could be biased, and then vice versa, you know, we could ask the proponent to locate a counsel and then we'd be.
The bylaw allows for a process for resolving disputes around experts. And it goes to the select board for them to make the final decision.
That's half of the problem right there.
Well, but as we, we know, if we're gonna go down this run, this this hole and we reopen the public hearing and we're gonna get more expert testimony, it's going to.
Well, here's a question, this, here's the question, right, look how much we've learned in the, in the last three months, forget the last two years, last three months. We reopen the hearing, we we stretch this out another forty-five days, sixty days. What is it that you expect we're gonna find in those sixty days and how relevant is it gonna be sixty days past that?
Well, the law, I think, is is better, is more finite than the, although the law has changed.
Than the experts.
I, I would caution your optimism. Having practiced law for as long as I did, it is rarely clear.
My, my concern is, I don't, well.
Yeah, I don't, I I I very rarely, no disrespect to the lawyer in the room, but I've I've very rarely met a lawyer that will, that will put his butt on the line. He'll, he'll write, he'll write an opinion that does this.
True. Well, did we see recently that there are some twenty odd bills before the legislature that, on solar?
That aren't even consistent.
And that are not consistent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But, so I wasn't, I wasn't looking for an opinion on what's in the future. There are some laws that have been passed since this case started
Mm-hmm.
that are now on the record, I don't understand how they impact our ability um to rule on this, and and they might.
Yeah.
But, and I'm not suggesting that I need that input, we're gonna, we can swing the bat and without it, but if we're gonna open the public hearing, let's.
Let's go for it.
All right, well, I guess I've asked the question several times, um, so I guess I would ask for the board's opinion on do we take a formal vote? Yeah, I'm looking at you.
Put a stake in the sand, man, and you know.
Do we, do we take a formal vote to open the, reopen the public hearing?
I think Sam and I are on the same boat, moving on, moving on down.
Absolutely.
Uh, if if we react to a situation right now, we forcing them to do their homework on the other side. Why should we sit here and solve the problem for them, that's not our job. Our job is to protect the town and the citizens.
Right.
Not to solve the problem of corporate America, which is raping the whole system anyway, so.
Well, I mean, I agree with you ninety percent of what you've just said. It is our job to protect the town and the citizens, but it's also our job to make sure that we protect the rights of the landowner in such a fashion that it doesn't put the town in the citizens in harm's way, I mean, landowners still have rights to.
Well, the thing is, landowners are getting swayed now, these landowners, they consider themselves a one, on the one percentage side. Landowners can be swayed by the dollar bill, I think that's the whole problem, is money.
Yeah.
It's all revenue driven.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely, it's definitely economically driven.
With state money, instead of money. Oh, there's a lot of federal money out there, you know, there's, there's some guy in Colorado, some solar company was formed by three buddies talking on their, their tablets back and forth, they start a solar company, hey, there's uh ten billion dollars in federal money on such and such a project, oh, let's put a grant in for it, boom. Next you know, they're solar, they're solar specialists. When wind power came in twenty years ago, it was just starting, there were some guys from, there were local guys, east coast, they started the same type thing. They petitioned all the municipalities to put wind towers on municipal property. So they, they own that, that clutch. And when they were going around trying to get everybody lined up, they couldn't get enough to put the package together to sell it off. But they're thinking out of the box, and that's what people are doing. And solar's the same thing, fusion, I think fusion's the next, the next power source. And uh, it it's, it's coming, and the thing is, I I don't think we should, we should bend over backwards and uh, you know, feed into them. Yeah, conditions are nice, but conditions don't work in a situation like this. Because the thing is, you've got one shot to get it right the first time, you don't get a second chance. Uh, I'm surprised the Buzzers Bay Coalition hasn't been knocking on our door yet. Good example is Ferengi Hill, Ferengi Hill's a recharge, goes into the bay. They're getting dams removed to save the fish, and all of a sudden, we're polluting the water, the fish aren't gonna come. Eelgrass in Buzzers Bay is almost gone from fertilizing nitrogen on lawns and all that stuff. Worst enemy is Kemalons. But Kemalon goes to the billionaire that lives down in, down uh Katanzah Club right on the point, he got a beautiful lawn. They spray the shit out of it, they don't care, but his lawn's not so green, because they're the ones that are pushing the cat, not us.
All right, so I guess, I I keep, I keep swinging at this ball and I keep missing. So I'm gonna ask the question formally to the board. Yes or no, do we reopen the public hearing to take more testimony before we move on to our ultimate meeting to vote?
So you're starting with me again?
I'm starting with you.
No.
So, well, let me, let me pose it correctly. I would entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing to take public uh testimony from experts for the, uh, let me get this right, so I don't get yelled at by Ken. For thirty-three dash twenty-one Wareham PVC LLC zero root twenty-five. Do I have a motion? No motion being heard, I would assume that that would mean that the board is not in favor of reopening the public hearing? Mike, you are not in favor?
No.
Sherry?
Let me make a statement.
Condition.
That's the lawyer coming out of here now.
Let me condition.
I should, I should have, I should have proposed that motion in the opposite, that thing would have been easier to.
You know, I look at things as a range of risk, and um I think uh if the applicant is proposing to reopen the public record in order to answer our questions about safety, which we are uncomfortable with, you know, the lawyerly part of me says uh that we should do that because um it puts us in a position of being able to listen to what we have said we're we're missing and make a decision on that basis. The the board may still not be satisfied, uh but I'm a little bit uncomfortable saying uh we're not satisfied and we don't wanna hear more.
So.
I would say, oh, I would say yes.
Okay, so we have one, one yes?
No with no condition.
No to reopening the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
I think I'm with Sherry, I think I'm gonna say yes. Yeah, I, I, I think that I'd rather err on the side of getting more information um and that's more up to date, you know, it's newer than yesterday would have been.
But I would also say, I'm not at all sure that we'll be satisfied after.
I'm not either.
Never, that's the thing.
I'm not either, but I I think that where our charge is to protect the health, safety and welfare of the residents of Wareham, that more information is better than less, and newer information is better than older information.
Carl?
I'm gonna answer this question the way I typically do it. I believe that if we make whatever ruling we make on this application regarding health, safety and welfare with respect to batteries is under the two thousand nineteen version of bylaw, we have, don't hold me, nobody hold me to exact math, but there's probably ten more projects that are subject to this set of bylaws. And whatever ruling we make with respect to health, safety and welfare on this project.
Right, goes. Goes forward.
Should should really be consistently applied.
I agree.
To any future project unless the conditions are so different that there's a reason not to. So, if we believe there's a chance that we're gonna learn something more, then we should take. But I also have heard several members say they're not gonna learn anything new and it's gonna continue forever and so I I'll go with with the majority.
Which is.
Well, you have the majority. Well, what what do you think, that's what I was gonna say.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, um, I just need to correct what may be a misimpression of our position, may I speak?
Can I legally let him speak if we're not taking public comment from anybody?
Yeah, you can.
You sure?
Yeah.
Well, he's not, he's not public.
Hmm?
Yeah.
Alright, go ahead.
We have not, we have not.
Well, it's not a public hearing.
Mr. Cosgrove, Mr. Cosgrove, please don't interrupt.
Yeah, it it appears the board is discussing um what they may think is a request from us to reopen the public hearing. We have not requested to reopen the public hearing.
Alright, well, then then that's, that that's a good piece of information, how about if we do this? If we vote that we we think it's a good idea to reopen the public hearing to gather more information from industry experts, i- i- is that something that you would be willing to agree with?
I would need to check with our client.
Well, no, we're looking for an answer this evening. We, the the clock is ticking, we're we're here, we're here in this room, not only on our own time, but off-cycle meetings, so you know, you have to be respectful of our time as well.
Understand, um, no, we are not requesting to reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
And I can't at this time agree to reopen.
Alright, well, that 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 solves, that solves one issue we have on the table tonight. So, alright, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Alright, so, having said that, we're back to preparing for a vote and you know, we've talked about possible conditions if if approved. Is is there any other input on conditioning that anybody can think of, should we go that route?
Well, I I mean, if we did determine to condition, I think there would be a large number of conditions related to safety that would need to be developed and attached and would require the applicant to come in and make a showing to us in response to those questions with respect to safety. I'm not in a position tonight to enumerate all of those, but that's, that's all I would say.
Okay. Anything else to add, Mike?
No, I made it, I made it to vote.
Well, I I think we'd have to put together a a a a formal presentation for the vote with, you know, a list of conditions that would be attached to an approval if the vote went that way. I don't know, unless I'm reading the room wrong, does the board wanna take a vote this evening?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Carl?
I guess we we could take.
I I think I'm reading the room and I, there's no point, there's no point in even continuing if I'm reading the room.
Well, I, and I and I agree, I I think, you know, if 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 the project does get approved with conditions, at that point, we can determine collectively what those conditions would be, should the, should the vote go affirmative. I mean, we have a list of of suggestions which I think are all pretty solid.
Mr. Chairman, in the past, we've, and I don't, I'll defer to Ken, but I'm gonna throw this, we've taken straw votes. Kinda get a sense. I don't know if that would help tonight, but to clarify their sense of the room.
A straw vote?
Is that legal?
That's why I said I deferred to Ken, but we have done that on at least.
I'm not sure.
Here's what I would suggest, that you take a vote, and then then I draft up a decision that uh fits that vote.
That reflects the.
And then, and then you would adopt that formally at the next meeting.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think a straw vote's gonna really make any difference, I, like, to your point, reading the room, I I think everybody has formulated their position on this project based on their own sets of concerns, which have been discussed openly and and on the record.
And and people have openly stated they don't see any more information changing their opinion.
Correct. Okay.
Is there any reason we can't take a vote, was it duly announced?
It it was on the agenda, possible vote.
Yeah, possible vote.
Where does it say possible vote?
Yeah, e- e- excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, discussion, I see it, thanks. Okay.
Excuse me. Um, may I, may I just comment on something?
Um, this, this will be the last comment. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, um, we certainly want to um uh address all the concerns raised by the board. And I know there's been discussion tonight of uh approving the project with a condition that it not include uh battery energy storage. Um, and uh I think that um, we don't believe that's legally justified, but um I think uh Long Road could live with that condition and then work, you know, do its best to work with the state system um so that uh the project uh can move forward without battery energy storage.
Okay, thank you. Alright. I would entertain a motion to take a vote.
Want a motion to take a vote?
We're gonna vote.
Entertain a motion.
It's good to have a little extra thought time.
I would entertain a motion to approve thirty-three dash twenty-one Wareham PV one LLC zero root twenty-five solar energy generation facility with conditions. No, we need a vote, though.
Yeah.
So I need somebody to make the motion.
Well, you could go the other way.
And deny?
And say.
I think I'm gonna get a, I think I'm gonna have an easier time getting a motion that way.
But but then we don't have to write the conditions.
Okay.
So you, so you want somebody to make a motion?
I would, I would, I would entertain a motion.
No, I don't know if that works, because if we don't deny it, then we in fact approve it, we still need the condition.
Yeah.
So how do we write, i- if this gets approved, Ken, how do we write the conditions without enumerating them tonight, or can we?
Yeah, didn't you just say?
You 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 give me the 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 gist of what you're looking for, and we already have some of these in running already.
Right.
And I just dropped them up and at the next meeting you uh.
We adopt them.
You you formally approve the decision and rest written.
Alright, so, let's see if I can do this neutrally so that we can have yeses and nos. So I would entertain a motion to vote on zero root twenty-five solar energy in either a yea or a nay. Do that, so I can, so now it's neutral, the motion to vote.
Well, but that, it, but you have to approve or deny.
But that'll be done with the yea or a nay.
And I want the motion to specifically say special permit, site plan review with special permit. Because that's an issue of dispute.
Yeah.
And I know the applicant disagrees with it.
Alright, so make a motion.
But we need to be clear that we're, if we're voting on site plan review with special permit.
Alright, so make a motion. I've been asking for the motion.
Alright, alright, I'm trying to.
That's what I'm saying, it's hard, it's hard to to come up with the right wording.
So, I move that we approve the site plan review special permit for thirty-three twenty-one Wareham PV one LLC zero root twenty-five solar energy generation facility decision with conditions or, excuse me, based on the plan of record that we talked about earlier.
One twenty twenty-three.
The plan of record Ja- uh January twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the operations plan dated eleven twenty twenty-two, um as amended with conditions around recycling and.
De- decommissioning plan.
I didn't get that, I was gonna, I'm still talking about the operations plan.
Got it.
With conditions clarifying recycling disposal or potential reuse program for panels at end, at at end of useful life, that could mean even mid, mid-operation, not end of. As well as a s- uh s- a seed pollinator protocol similar to the one that's been put forward, that can be agreed upon uh with an adjustment in the seeding mix so that we don't end up with a monoculture um seed or grass field. And the decommissioning plan uh dated two six twenty-three, and we'll ask the applicant, Attorney Clavens has has given us several letters with some clarification, so the decommissioning plan dated two six twenty twenty-three incorporating the letters of clarification of of agreements and that that the applicant has agreed to, with an agreement to review the decommissioning plan at time of building permit, at any time that an extension is requested for the special permit, and at the ongoing regular review process.
Five-year.
Five years. Incorporating all of the the conditions that Attorney Clavens submitted in his draft letter a couple of weeks ago before our previous view. Are there any other obvious conditions that we've talked about?
Um, so, this is approving the project without battery storage?
No, I didn't say that.
So this would be with battery storage?
With battery storage.
And I think that it would be necessary to have a set of conditions that query about the manufacturing, testing, fire protections.
Point of order, we're discussing it, is is a motion.
I'm trying to make the motion, I'm trying to list all of the components of the motion.
But I I think we all know what the conditions are, we've discussed them.
We need to call them out and they need to be clear, Ken needs to be clearly articulate them in.
And maybe we're not ready for a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna stop for a moment with making my motion. My concern is, if we just make a motion to approve and say with conditions, we all may leaving here with a very, and the applicant who's listening may be hearing a whole differing.
But it's all recorded, it'll, it can all be reviewed.
But only if we say the word conditions without listing the conditions, it's, there's nothing specific. This is a very important.
Yes, it is.
Vote.
It seems that the conditions really kinda need to be spelled out as
Or, but.
As part of the vote, because.
Well, that's, that's what what Kyle was doing, but I think we dive, I think we were diving into the weeds a tiny bit.
I I think that the conditions have to be extreme, or if we don't think it's, it's gonna pass no matter what I say, then we should deny and stop fooling everybody.
Is that a motion?
No, no, I stopped, I stopped, because you told me, stop, everybody said stop listing conditions, I'm not gonna vote
Without conditions.
Any motion that doesn't have conditions, and if we don't get our act together soon with listing conditions, they're gonna get a de facto, a con- a constructive approval that has no conditions.
Right, well, that happens on the twenty-sixth.
Right. But we gotta stop, we 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 either need to deny this and move on.
No, I I think we're at the point that we, we need to vote. We need to vote, we're not gonna reopen the public hearing, we've already decided that, the the proponent has done that for us. We've listened to everything. What we've talked about tonight is basically a rehash of what we talked about at the last meeting, so there's nothing new coming out of it.
I, no, I agree with that, I was just trying to form a connect, if somebody wants to make a different motion, I withdraw my motion.
No, I I think the motion's fine if we can just, let's bullet point the conditions very specifically. So, your, your motion is leaving the battery storage in place.
That was where I started, yes.
Okay, so with battery storage, conditions include the.
Well, does somebody wanna make a motion without that?
No, I just wanna list the conditions, then then we'll find.
Alright, then.
The seeding mix?
No, the plan of record dated January twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
The operations plan dated eleven twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
As modified with.
The subsequent letters from the proponent.
No, no, this is with additional language clarifying the requirement that they uh use best efforts to recycle, attempt to implement a a a reuse program for citizens in the town.
So they would present that to us.
Right.
Okay.
And it and it would be updated to include the pollinator program as amended with an appropriate seed mix to avoid monoculture monoculture grass field being produced. With the understanding that 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 seeding has to be established and maintained and and alive.
Yeah, established.
Established, whatever, okay. That we have a decommissioning plan uh dated two six twenty twenty-three as clarified by several letters from the applicant and that we would request the applicant to just give us the, but they they made some additional concessions articulating that they were gonna, they didn't rewrite the decommissioning plan with the new bond number, but the bond number was included in in a subsequent letter.
Yep.
So I would work with Ken or Ken and the applicant to just get the dates of those letters that, where we went through all those discussions. With the further understanding that the decommissioning plan would be reviewed at time of building permit, at time of any extension of of the special permit and at a regular five-year interval subsequent to th- those dates. That uh Sherry was giving me some, some conditions around establishing additional information around battery details, battery enclosures, battery safety protocols, I'm 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 trying to.
I would just capture them as battery safety protocols.
Yeah.
And and related issues.
And related issues. And then I was just trying to think, are there any other subsequent items that we talked about within the our debates, our discussions that we wanna get on record, or we, I I did say that we include the conditions that Attorney Clavon uh agreed to in his letter prior to our last workshop.
And, I'm sorry, could we also clarify, that he styled them as conditions to a site plan review? The, these are conditions to site plan review special permit.
My motion was site plan, because I understand that's an issue of contention between us and the applicant. We need to be clear what we're voting on.
Yep. Okay.
Uh, I'm trying to think of any other substantive issues in the entire history that we talked about, we, this has been going on for two years, I can't remember every condition that may have. Ken, do you remember anything that we've talked about that we, we should enumerate or call out?
Uh, probably, uh, there's some uh conditions that uh were submitted, I think, by Barry Cosgrove. That had uh considered appropriate, that could be considered in here as well, too.
Do you have them in front of you, or do you want?
Yeah, I have them right here.
Go ahead, you wanna read them out?
Uh, no building permit or work commencement until site prep and until there's removal investigations and appeals are concluded.
That, that, that question has been asked and answered.
Okay, so we're not accepting that.
No building permit until work commencement or site prep until the Conservation Commission is, and action and all appeals are concluded.
There's no con- Conservation Commission has already ruled that if they have no jurisdiction?
No building permit until representation of no where it's removal exceeding five cubic yards being removed from the site. No building permit until submission of a forest clean plan and compliance with. No building permit until submission of a forest clean plan in compliance with Mass General laws. Landowners uh, shall not profit from selling of trees to be removed. Compliance with the E P noise noise policy. A protection biologist engaged in the in the uh, project for the Plymouth Red-bellied turtle. And there was no longer no long-eared bat. And full biological assessment for presence-based species listed under the Mass and Dangerous Species Act, federal dangerous species act.
I'm not hearing anything there.
All right, so we're not including, so far, we're not including any of those conditions, is that what you're saying?
Engaged soil scientists, seed mix, pollinator friendly.
Which we tried to address in my statement about the operations plan.
Irrigation of grass should be compulsory.
We.
Well, they have to establish them.
It has to be established and.
And however they go about that, that's up to them.
Whether they drive by with a tanker, truck, or whatever, up to them.
Having anybody's uh, construction permit in place.
Having a what?
N P D S, natural pollution discharge elimination system construction permit in place.
Is that, is that, I don't even know what that means, is that reasonable?
That's the MS four program, that's something that's reasonable, that's required.
Okay.
They're distributing more than one airplan.
All right.
Positive report on artifacts with discovery in uh, on the site. A comprehensive hydrology study.
Yeah.
Uh, monitoring program for PFAS cadmium telluride, cadmium and telluride.
All right, this is gonna be too complicated, so I, we haven't.
I haven't heard anything that.
Well, monitoring programs, so much of the training projects.
Okay.
So I'm, one other thing is the interconnection agreement and um, I think that the question would be uh, whether um, whether to not permit any felling of trees until within.
Until the connection isn't.
Okay, that and Barry mentioned that about site, site prep work, so we could say no site prep work until the interconnection is in hand.
There are no trees there.
It will be in hand before, it will, they will be able to interconnect.
All right, so what is your amendment to my motion?
Would be that there would be no site prep work until uh, actual interconnection is possible within, you know, a recent, like a six-month period of time.
Okay, so Ken, did you, well, that's on the tape, you can.
Yeah.
These are very complicated set of conditions, do we wanna vote without reading them?
That's true.
Are you okay with how we're doing?
Yeah, that's true.
No, I think everybody's clear with how we've been.
Your series again, your series again before it's submitted to the town clerk.
Okay, so that's, that is my motion, looking for a second, I I can't think of anything. We wanna make sure we get all the right conditions.
Mm-hmm.
The the decision document needs to list every artifact that we've reviewed, all the letters from the town people.
Yeah, understood.
So that's, that's the motion, you asked for a motion, I'm trying to get it out there.
I think you did a good job, you did better than I would.
That's a hell of a motion.
It is, so we have a motion to approve, do we have a second? This is just to get to a vote, doesn't mean you're gonna have to vote yes, we just, if we need to get to a vote, we need a second.
You can't vote.
You can't vote, you can't vote.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Kyle Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All those in favor, Mike Baptiste.
No.
Sam Corbett.
No.
Kyle Schultz.
I abstain. Well, wait, it's already denied, we we, they didn't get the four votes, so.
Is that, is that recorded vote?
I don't have to.
Yeah, you abstained, yeah, that's fine.
That's that's a recorded vote, yeah.
Yeah.
And the chair votes no. So we have, we have the vote, we have zero.
Zero three one.
Zero three one.
So, we need to justify that vote, so the, what is the justification for our no vote? It's going to be based on, I presume, health, safety, and welfare.
Correct.
So we need to write a defensible statement.
Correct.
To support that.
Correct.
Are we gonna say that on the record tonight?
A statement?
Yes, how did we, why did we vote no?
Do you want it?
I think we have to draft something else and have your.
I I I say, I I think we should draft it.
I think we should handle it the same way we was gonna handle the, if it was a yes vote, with conditions.
Yeah, we were still gonna draft a document, if we voted yes, we're still gonna put a document together to formally adopt at the next meeting, so we we do the same thing with this, we draft.
I just wanted, okay, but it's basically based on health, safety, and welfare.
Correct.
Look, I I think based on what you all have said tonight.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's that's what I heard, the overwhelming concern was was health, safety, and welfare.
What I've said is from almost the very beginning.
Yeah, but no one.
Single source act prefer, if we screw up or we have a catastrophe of any kind.
That.
Health, safety, welfare of Tom is done.
At least out there.
Yeah.
As part of the vote.
Okay, so.
Thank you, motion to adjourn.
Can I ask one question before you adjourn?
We have another comments, too.
Oh. How are, how are you gonna go about drafting this, if I may ask? Well, let me make it more simple, I'm happy to help.
Yes, I would like that very much.
He's gonna send it in by email, all right.
This is a creative writing, huh?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Sheri.
Okay, it will not be the most creative thing I've ever written, but.
Okay.
Okay, and will we review that then at the eighth?
We will review that at the eighth, yeah, 'cause we don't have to have a while we've already taken our vote, but we don't have to formally adopt it until the twenty-sixth.
Has to be into, has to be into the clerk before the twenty-sixth.
Right.
Okay, so my request is if I'm gonna sign this, I wanna be able to read it before I sign it.
Well in advance of the eighth, if if we're gonna sign it on the eighth, we need.
It's a reasonable request.
Yes. And indeed.
Not the red eight, no.
And not, no, no, I would want, I would wanna see it no later than if we're gonna, the eighth was a Monday, I'd like to see it in hand like the following Monday, give me a full week to digest it.
Exactly.
And make sure you send it in Italian, 'cause I'll be reading it on the brand or in Italy.
How you gonna get served?
Well, I'm gonna get served.
Yeah.
They'll have to hire someone to fly over, yes. All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I need a motion.
I need a mo- uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
This is the first time you haven't said that you wanted this.
This I think is the earliest meeting ever.